Hi, Chair. Okay, we're going to call to order the regular city council meeting of June 12th, 2023. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Albrecht.
Here.
Gould.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Trent.
Here.
Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, and thank everybody for coming out. A very big turnout to see State Rep. Tisdale tonight. So, we have... Yeah. First, we have our scheduled and non-scheduled presentations. So first, we're going to have a presentation from the City Council for Officer Paul Carr. So I see back there in recognition of his retirement after 29 years of service for the Rochester Police Department. Paul, come on up. So Paul, I have a resolution for you tonight from the council. I'll be brief. Whereas Paul Carr is retired from the City of Rochester on May 31st, 2023, after 29 years of protecting us. Whereas Paul Carr served as patrol officer, and whereas during his years of service, Paul was committed to keeping the City of Rochester safe for its residents, business owners, and visitors. Whereas during his years of service, Paul Carr serves as a field training officer, training many of our city's new officers. Paul was also part of the original member of the motor unit logging many hours of motorcycle patrol. Paul, I think you secretly enjoyed that. Whereas, Paul, the City Council is appreciative of Paul's diligence and hard work during his employment, and therefore, it be resolved that the Rochester City Council hereby expresses its sincere gratitude to Paul for his years of service to the City of Rochester. So congratulations, Paul. No, that's it? And Paul? Okay.
Thank you.
I talked for 29 and a half years. Thank you very much.
Great job, Paul.
So I understand there was a special recognition on your last day. What was that ceremony? What was that? We could have been there.
Yeah, that was awesome.
Well, yes, we did have a nice send-off. We have a kind of a tradition in the police service of having a last call, and actually, former dispatcher Melody McCrindle was the one who read off the last call over the radio for Officer Carr. And then there was a kind of a rolling parade, if you will, to a local establishment where a party was held in his honor. So, you know, just to say a few words about Paul, it's, you know, somebody who works in police service for 29 years is getting to be kind of a rarity. I mean, a lot of people leave the profession earlier than that, and, you know, Paul has certainly made his mark on the department. And leaders, some of our leaders wear sergeant stripes and bars and eagles on their collars, but some of them, like Paul, are coming to work every day and making a difference. The department is a better place. We have better officers because of senior members like Paul Carr. And I certainly have appreciated knowing Paul and working with Paul over the years that I've been here. And as I said, it's a better place because of him. So I thank you for that.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Councilmember Trent.
Yes, I would like to say a personal thank you to Officer Carr. I know him. He lived next door to my family, my mother and my stepdad, and he was so helpful, and he was always helpful to my family. So a special thank you for all that caring and help that you gave them.
Thank you.
My mom's still alive, I'll tell her. You said "hi." She's still alive. I'll tell her you said "hi."
All right. Paul, thank you, and if you change your mind, let us know. Thanks, Paul. All right, next, we have a presentation update from State Representative Mark Tisdale. Representative, welcome. The other guy got applause. That's pretty good. I like that. I would say... You only get that if you sing. I would say the average age of this group is probably about half of what I'm used to speaking to, so... But real quickly, it's been a while since I've been here. This current legislative session has, we've completed five months. There have been 41 new public acts signed into law as of June 7th. I will not go through all of them, but a few of them are worth highlighting. One of them moves the Michigan presidential primary from March into February. Now, what's interesting, in the legislature, if a bill does not receive immediate effect, it goes into effect 90 days after the legislative session ends, within that calendar year. That particular bill did not receive immediate effect in the Senate, so if we're, if the state is going to move its primary from March to February, we might have to end our legislative session sometime in July, and then we would be done for the year and called back only for special meetings. So we'll have to, we'll have to see what goes there. That's all that makes that interesting. There are a couple of retirement and pension, there was a retirement and pension bill passed that would change the taxation of certain pension funds and retirement funds. And then there was a, there was an increase in the earned income tax credit as well. Went from, from, I want to say, 6% of the federal level to 40% of the federal level. And what that, and the earned income tax, if you have, if you have tax-exempt income that is unearned, you can get a portion of that back in the form of a check to, just to help support your daily living expenses. There are about 7 million prime working-age men in the United States. That's age 25 to 54, that are currently not working and not looking for work. We think there's probably 250,000 of those in the state of Michigan. So if a little extra earned income tax credit benefit helps them get off the sidelines, that's a good thing, because it is earned. It's paid after wages, wages have been earned. There was a, the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act was amended. The word "sex" now in the act includes orientation and gender identity and expression. I voted for that. The Equal Employment Opportunity Commission has started hearing those cases and awarding damages back in 2013. The Michigan Civil Rights Commission started hearing those in 2018. U.S. Supreme Court said that's what the word "sex" means relative to civil rights in 2020, and the Michigan State Supreme Court said that, made that ruling in 2022. It's better to have the firm language in the law. If you end up having to defend yourself, then I think instead of having a jury try and follow the directions given by a judge that's interpreting a higher court's interpretation. So just put it in the law if that's what everybody says it is. There was, there was the repeal to the right-to-work. Michigan, for 10 years, was a right-to-work state. What that meant is that workers had the option, if they were employed by a company that was covered by a bargaining contract, a representative bargaining agreement, workers had the choice on whether they had to pay the operating dues to that union or not. That's been eliminated. There's also been the reinstatement of prevailing wage. I voted against right-to-work. I just can't, I kept asking if you could identify another private entity that the state compels you to join and fund, and I never got an answer back on that one. Prevailing wage, I voted against as well. That was one that I could have voted for that, because wage inflation today, as we know with the shortage of employees available, wage inflation has blown past many of these standing union contracts, and it only applied to those projects within the state that were, that you use state funding. If you use federal funding, Davis-Bake and federal law already covered that. It was expanded to include any project in the state using school millage funds. And then there were, there were a number of substitutes that were very confusing and right up to maybe 10, 15 minutes before the vote. So I was a no on that one. It was, the way it was written was kind of difficult to support. I voted yes for the gun safety storage bill, for which I was called a backstabbing liar rhino by the right wing of our party, and I... I voted no for the emergency risk protection order bill, or our version of the red flag bill. It's just a very poorly-written bill for which, you know, the left is now already running digital ads against me for the 2024 election, saying I don't care if mentally ill people have guns and shoot people. So I guess when you're getting it from both sides, maybe you're, maybe you're doing something right in a 50-50 district. I'm just trying to think if there's anything else really here shocking, other than we did pass a, we did pass a bill on a kind of a no texting while you're driving. Don't mess, you know, don't be handling your phone. I voted yes for that. One of the kind of exciting things here in Rochester and Rochester Hills is the Michigan Municipal League has started a municipal caucus. I'm one of four co-chairs. Two of the, of the four co-chairs are me and Senator Mike Weber. So Rochester, Rochester Hills area, you know, the two of us have been recognized as good government types that the Michigan Municipal League wants on their, wants on their caucus. We have about, we have a good 20 to 24 members, something like that. All elected officials with local government experience. So one of the things we're looking at right now, there are some bills coming through on aggregate mining, aggregate and sand mining, and the way they're written now, the municipal caucus wants more local control, and so we're working on that. And I guess that's really about it. I'm open for any questions, any comments, or anything I missed that you wanted to hear more about? Any questions, comments? Anybody? No? Thank you for coming. You're welcome. It was a pleasure to be here. Thank you. Are there any, are there any other public comments for things that are not on the agenda? Skateboarding is on the agenda.
Did you think they came for something else?
Okay.
To say hi.
We are on to approval of the minutes. It's a consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 22nd, 2023.
All moved.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. First is a consideration of special event application from the PSD to hold sidewalk sales on July 13th through 15th. Next is a consideration of special event application from the PSD to hold dancing in the streets on July 14th, West Fourth Street. Next is a consideration of special event application from the Children's Heart Foundation to hold the congenital heart walk in Municipal Park on Saturday, August 19th. And D is a review of the current special event calendar.
To approve as presented?
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Trent. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Next, we do not have any old business or table items. Now, we're on to public hearing. The first public hearing is a public hearing for a consideration of a liquor license for bitter toms at 319 Main Street. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is Tom here, or his wife here? There you are. Tom's coming up. So tonight, we have scheduled that your last city council meeting, a couple of city council meetings ago, the public hearing for a new off-premise tasting room for, at 319 Main Street for Bitter Toms. It's the former Antiques by Pamela space, and Tom's, I've known him for 15 years here at the city now, and we know him as a builder in town, but he's also got a side gig that he's doing in Lake Orion with Bitter Toms. And we're very excited to have him come in and have a tasting room and convert that first-floor space on Main Street. And Tom's here, I'm sure to answer any questions we might have. I know Chief, I don't know if he stepped up, but we ran everything, and, oh, there he is. Chief, we're good to go on everything on the report, so...
Okay, so, Council, are there any questions for the City Manager or for the applicant before we open the public hearing? No? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
So we will now open the public hearing at 7:16. Are there any comments from the public on bitter toms at 319 Main Street? We will close the public hearing at 7:17. Council.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Albrecht.
I was just gonna do that, but that's all right.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations. Good luck. Thanks very much. See you soon.
Thanks, Tom.
Wow. Okay.
Need an audience from now on.
Okay, so next, we have a public hearing regarding the consideration of a skate park being proposed in Scott Park, located at 580 Woodward. So the procedure is, we will have City Manager kind of give an overview, and then we will open up the public hearing. Anybody who wants to speak can. Then we will close the public hearing, and then the City Council will have discussion and a vote, if there's a vote that we had. So, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Probably about, I'm gonna say over 10 years ago, we started this journey, I think. I remember going down to Farmington Hills at Seven Mile, at their big park there, and looked at, a guy that worked with me, Dave Boyer, became the Parks and Rec director down there and invited us down to look at their skate park. And at the time, it was a, over a million-dollar park. It was a deep bowl. It was state-of-the-art. And we started that journey together, because folks, Lyndon and Vaughn Gallagher, had started that, coming and talking about, they had the skate street, the South Street Skate Shop, down on South Street, where we had the indoor facility. And we all talked about, how could we get to that point? There was a different stigma back then, I think, about skate parks, and they've come a long way for all of you that look like you enjoy skateboarding. So we've watched other communities advance and create their own parks, et cetera, and partnerships. I know Tony Hawk Foundation's huge into this situation, and I'll give the Vaughns and former Mayor Dalton a lot of credit that they just kept after this until we get to the point where we can get to this point where we're looking for some kind of financial assistance through a grant. So we've been pretty clear, I think, three years ago, a little bit over three years ago, we came to council, a different council, in part, and talked about a location, and we talked about on our ball fields, that what would the city do? Where was the best place to put it? I remember the police chief and I, and the fire chief, and a lot of different folks, we sat around and talked about, where's a good spot for that? And we felt at that ball field, at the first iteration of it, it was right up on the road. And there was a thought that you want to be right up on the road, so people can see it, and also, it's good for safety. But again, over time, things have, the stigma of skate parks, that's not as important anymore. So we worked with this committee, they go by Splat, the Skate Park Leadership Advisory Team, kind of a tough name for skateboarders, but that's okay. So I think it's a great acronym. So we worked together, and now it's more refined, more what I would call urban skate park. We're not looking at that deep bowl. Saves a lot of money, and it's more of a street skate. And it's, we look like we will not have to shift our ball field and do major improvements there, which was, in the beginning stages, we talked about that heavily. That would be a big deal, especially with Rochester College or University now using the ball field, et cetera. We found a way that could tuck this in between where the gardens are, where the parking lot is, and then where the ball field is. So it's a great happy medium, and there's a couple basketball courts there, but we've been working together with our engineers, looking at different items. We know there's a water main that goes through, things like that. So I think tonight, the Splat folks are gonna come up and talk a little bit about what they're looking to do. We're looking for a resolution in support of a grant opportunity, if Council chooses to go that route, so...
Mr. Mayor? Do you have a presentation? Mayor, councilmember, whatever, Dalton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to present to you tonight, and I want to thank everybody for coming out. This is awesome. This is what we needed. What we're looking for tonight is a resolution to apply for the grant, and that's the big part, is the grant. And if you have any questions about the grant, Linda Davis-Curtsi is able to answer those questions. I can answer any. I just wanted to give a protocol on what you do when you come up here, because I think we have a lot of new people that have probably never been in front of council. Best thing to do is state your name, where you live, and then give us, I want the park, I love the park, I think the idea is great, anything like that is perfect. If you're not comfortable doing that, I think just being here is super important to our cause, so I just want to get that out there, so everybody understands what the protocol is moving forward. So... I think in your packet.
Yep.
Yeah, we have it.
Yeah. The location.
Everything that you need, and what I really wanted to do, having served up on the dais before, is give you as much information in that packet as possible. So it's a large packet, there's a lot of information, there's a timeline, there's the resolution, there's pictures, there's letters of support. So I think the packet is pretty, pretty well-prepared and gives you a good idea of what we're looking for. Instead of doing a long presentation, I think the packet speaks for itself, so...
Mr. Mayor, could we, maybe Linda could explain, I'm sorry. Maybe Linda?
Linda could explain the grant, just so we know what we're looking for?
Yeah, this is a phenomenal opportunity to accomplish this project, because generally, there was some ARPA funds that was $65 million worth that were awarded to the state of Michigan through the feds last year. The governor took that funding and directed it through the DNR, the Department of Natural Resources, which were, normally, that's where we go for parks and recreation support. So last year, they came out very quick with the application, and they had $15 million. They had 482 applications that applied, and that $15 million went very quickly. And it was very competitive, and I looked at the scoring. I had other clients that had applied for it and seen, and I received four of them. I would tell you, four out of the 15. We didn't apply at that time, because it was a very fast turnaround, but I've been working with our grants committee, Nancy and, we were all together on this, and always looking for funding opportunities. These folks have worked real hard to raise the donated match that they're gonna apply with this application. Normally, with these type of grants, you have to have 25% of the overall cost. The maximum that they will give on this grant is $1 million. And you have to, there's no match required, they encourage it. I've reviewed, been a grant reviewer. You want to have match to show your skin in the game, but this is an opportunity for them not to have to fundraise for the next 100 years to try to accomplish what you want to. I am so overwhelmed that you guys are here tonight. This is how we do it, to show the state that we have widespread community support. Normally, we wouldn't have had to do a public hearing for this application. I wanted to do it to show the kind of widespread support and the length of time you've worked so hard to try to get where we are. So this is COVID money that was directed to Parks and Rec. They are, this is the last round that they're gonna have available. They have another round at the end of the year, but those are for communities they've already identified that have no parks, you know, or recreation opportunities. So this gives us a chance to accomplish your vision, and, like I said, if I'm open for questions, if anything, that I can answer for anybody. Yes.
How much is, thanks for coming out, and thanks, everybody, for coming out for support. You said 15 million last year, was it like 24 million this year?
It's 23 million this round, okay? So you're competing with recreation projects from, without the state. The difference is, we know how they scored, what they're looking for. This is COVID money, so we always have to talk about why outdoor recreation is so critical. What we saw during COVID, the shutdown, we didn't have any place to go. Where did everybody want to be? Outside. Well, we have to have a skate park, something for our young people, older people, people my age that want to get out and do things in outdoor recreation. The thing that is always a struggle with us, because we have economics, you know, that are above some other cities, but yet, we have needs, and we have opportunity, and we have support. And this widespread community support, I think, will put us over on our project. So if that answers your question...
Thank you, Linda.
Yes. You're welcome.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So what is the max that they will authorize through this grant?
A million.
And what is our estimated cost?
Our estimated cost is 750, you'll see in your packet, the resolution is, the total project cost is approximately $750,000. We've got a $10,000 match that's been held in the Community Foundation of Rochester, Greater Rochester, which we're applying to that, which will give us a 740 grant, if approved. Okay?
Yeah, that's awesome.
If approved. So we have a chance, you guys. This is the opportunity, it is, definitely. Any other questions for me?
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you. Sorry, I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
So the location within our parks. So I know we have moved it a little bit, as City Manager stated, and I know it's been moved with input from the Splat Committee.
Yes.
And so I just really want to hear from the obvious supporters of this. Is this the spot in our city that you want a skate park?
So, and this was also talked about in the grant, in the grant committee?
Yep.
That we would put it there and not move the Ball Diamond? We thought that was a better arrangement, and it worked better for the city and the community. So that was something that was decided also in there, in the, at the grant city meeting?
So, yes, this community says, yes, this is where I want the skate park, versus anyplace else in the city.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, thank you, yeah.
I have a question.
Councilmember Trent?
Yes, it's good to see so much support. Thank you for coming. Yeah, so I have a question about the maintenance. Someone had, that was briefly mentioned last time, and...
During our presentation originally in 2018, where's Vaughn at? The maintenance was, becomes the city. So it's not unlike any other project that the city takes on. For instance, the ban shell. The ban shell was a donation, the city took the donation, donated money, built the ban shell, and then it became the property of the community. It's just like that. I did interview with the Tony Hawk Foundation. We talked to the city of Farmington and the city of Claussen about their maintenance, and other than the cutting the grass around it... And other than the cutting the grass around it and blowing the leaves, most of them said they haven't had any concrete issues within at least the first 10 years. So the maintenance is very low.
Yeah.
On a project like this, but it becomes part of the park system.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And that was discussed in the 2018 presentation.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you so much for persevering as I was sitting on council when this first came about. Very happy that we're finally here. I think it's one of the things that we need most in our community and I appreciate you working so hard to do it and I appreciate all the supporters here. My son was a skateboarder back when they had their South Street Skate Park. I have neighbors that skateboard down the street all the time. So I do know we need it and I think that's awesome.
And remember, when your city doesn't have a skate park, your city is the skate park.
Which I, which I will add, which I will add.
We would prefer them to have a place to go.
Sure. Yes, and which I will add, I would like to have that instead of having them skateboarding in the parking structure where it's dangerous.
Absolutely.
Further comments from council?
Just one, I guess.
Councilmember Trent?
Yeah, I guess, I can add on to that. All the skateboarders that skate around my office have been very polite and very nice and they haven't gotten hurt. So I would like to see they have. They have been. It's on Second Street. Apparently it's a pretty nice place to skateboard, but yes, I wanted to say that. And it's good to have something for young people in our city that they want to do and that's, that's, it looks like it's, I got, we got this letter saying it's now a competitive sport in the 2024 Olympics. And they also said that for your mental health and getting people outside, you know, maybe they could teach their moms and dads as well. So yeah, I think it's a wonderful idea.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, maybe it's a whole, maybe that's the downside, right?
Don't want that.
They don't want that.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, thank you. And what I think is awesome, because Kathy, you know out of Blumer, they did the ski jump back in the day.
Yes.
And this would be so cool if one of our own people on the skate park using it ends up going to the Olympics.
Yep, thank you.
Mayor? Councilmember Albrecht?
Kathy, how many people have signed the petition? I know.
1,200. We're over 1,200. Yes.
Thank you very much. Because I know it was 11:30 when I, in the packet, so it's 1,200 and we were going for 15, right?
As many as we can get because that goes in with the grant application.
Keep signing, everybody, keep signing.
Yep, all this information will go in with the grant application, which is super important.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I also want to add, at Heritage Days, I went down there specifically to see what the response would be at your table to do that and it was overwhelming.
Yeah, we had a great response at Heritage Days. I did a, Sue at Dinosaur Hill was kind enough to give me a table and Mayor Protem was there. So yeah, it turned out great. We had a great response, great sign up and everything.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so now we're going to open the public hearing and if people want to come up, they can. If you come up, as Ms. Dalton says, give your name and address and try to keep it brief. So we're going to start the public hearing at 7:32. So welcome.
Hi, my name is Evan Guzman. I live at 424 Timberlake Drive. I was in the audience here with the last meeting that was held. A lot of familiar faces. Mine has changed a little since then, but that's beside the point. I want to speak to the importance of the skate park in this area. I want to speak to the severity of this issue. We're seeing a lot of support today, but throughout the years, we've seen some of that dwindle and we need that to be enhanced, not just here today, but throughout. The remainder of however long this will take until the park is actually in existence. This is an extremely important thing. We're talking about mental health. We're talking about freedom of expression. There are a lot of young children, there are a lot of adults, myself included, that benefit from this in ways that we might not really be able to put into words even. This will do so much for this city. I think one of the key points that is sometimes overlooked is the diversity factor. This will bring people of all walks of life, from all over into this area. People even move to follow where skate parks are. People will travel from one end of the state to the other to be where skating is. And when we have this, we can enhance this. This will offer so many wonderful opportunities to this city. The science is out there. You know, we see it with neighboring skate parks, skate parks from other states. We see it all around. So I really want to stress that we need to stay with this. This is a very important thing. We're not going away. Our numbers are getting bigger. They're not decreasing. So we want some action. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening. John Hiblin, 536 West Third. 30-year-plus resident, two sons, one into skateboarding. Couldn't find any place to skate. Fortunately, the skate park, South Street, was open. He was able to go there, earn money, go there, whatever. Still skates today. I see just, just this past week, live on the corner of Third and Wilcox. My mom and her small son, two, maybe three, on a little skate scooter. Two days later, that same little boy with the big old helmet with his dad on the skateboard going down Third Street, going down Wilcox on the sidewalk, on the road. Third Street's pretty busy at times. We need a place for kids. We need a place for young adults. We need a place for adults to skate. This is so important. And I mimic the words before me as well. Mental health and everything. So appreciate your support. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Tom Nabbity, 1017 Inglewood, and then I'm also a business owner at 109 South Main Street. Two young skateboarders in my family. My daughter is here tonight. My son couldn't be here. We drive all over trying to find skate parks. We go to Claussen, we go to Auburn Hills, we go to Shelby Township. My kids are getting older. They're at a point where they want to go without that and there's nowhere for them to go. And then I, in the downtown, being a downtown business owner, I see kids skateboarding in our park. We're in the Gateway Center, so we have a parking lot and there's staircases and they're in there, very polite, never disrupting business. But it's a matter of time before, I mean, it's a narrow parking lot. It's a matter of time before, why don't we just hit by a car? Something bad happens. We're, we're sitting on a ticking time bomb that would be awfully nice if we are proactive and preventative and have a place for them to go that's safe where the only thing we got to worry about is them falling and hurting themselves by skating, but not by getting hit by a car. And that's really what I want for, for my kids and I hope we can get the support for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alex Hollander. I live at 750 Ironwood Drive. I've been skateboarding for about like 15 years now. Grew up in Lake Orion and recently have moved out here to Rochester. In all my life, I grew up coming to the Rochester Municipal Park. I've been coming to South Street Skate Shop and the skate park. And this would just be the most amazing thing ever for this to blossom into something that we have had this vision for today. And I just wanted to thank Vaughn and Linda and the Splat team and everyone and you guys for just providing the space for us to talk about this. The mental health aspects that have been talked about are just so important. I think skateboarding really provides people an opportunity to persevere and to go through discipline and to really develop some really core characteristics that we need in society today. And I think this would just be a place to foster that, foster leadership throughout the community, the safety aspect, and that would just be really fun. So thank you so much and please make us go through.
Hi, I'm Annalee Paul, 1367 Talbury Circle, Rochester, Michigan. I was part of the original Splat Kit Committee. Why? Because my son highly benefited. See, I get emotional. Because these kids, we have nothing for them. And with COVID, it took such a hit. And to see these kids, and again, we talked about diversity. I have a robotics kid that's going to Michigan, loves to skateboard. It crosses the avenues. So to give them a place where we can see them thrive, and again, I've sat at Modern Skate Park for hours at a time, or Landslide for hours and you drive 40 minutes. I think this is a very unique community and I think these kids deserve this to not only help them physically, but more importantly mentally, because it does provide a lot of strong commitment as well as the understanding of I can do this. So it gives them that power.
Welcome.
Hello, I'm June Ayr and I live on 137 Lyssandra Street, Rochester, Michigan. And I think it's a really great idea to do a skate park. I've been skateboarding for five years.
Oh, my God.
And, I mean, four or five years, forget now. But, and mostly, most kids when they skate park is like you mentioned, the parking structure. And because the top of it is like smooth and stuff, but it's, can be like with the cars racing through, it can be very dangerous. So, and like sometimes roads can be very bumpy and if you, like I have, like, and you can get hurt very easily. And so I think if you had a skate park, I could walk to there without, because I can't drive, obviously. And so I could walk to there, skateboard there, I could, and then hang out with my friends there and have a good time.
My name is Violet Harva. I live on 220 Oak Street, Rochester, Michigan. And I would like a skate park because I can't really, I have, I walk most places and I can't really walk to any of the skate parks in the near area because they're so far away. And I've been skateboarding for a couple, like two years or something. And I've, there's been a couple of times where like close calls to cars and, because I can like only drive around the streets and like to skate in like faraway places, but so that's why I want a skate park that I can walk to easily and have, be able to skate.
Hi.
Bring it down.
Yeah, just pull it down.
Pull it down. There you go.
There you go.
There we go.
Hi, my name is Lucas Litwin. I, I live at 1162 Valley Street Court, Rochester Hills, Michigan. And I think we need a skateboard because we don't, where I live, we don't have sidewalks where we can ride our skateboards. And if we go in the streets, cars can come by and we can probably get hit and get injured.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
My name is Nick Cobb and I'm from 6452 Landman Drive in Waterford, but I own a business on 222 South Main Street called Bruh. I don't know if you guys are familiar. I have met you.
Yep.
But I am going to speak for most people here, probably everybody here. And I also want to thank you guys so much for putting this together and everyone else who's helped. Thanks to the South Street team in the back. I see Modern Skating Surf here too. And yeah, so there's honestly a thousand things I could talk about right now, but what I want to start off with is what everyone else said, I agree 100%. And when it comes to skateboarding, what I believe in and why I even started a skate shop in the first place, is it's not even really about the sport itself as much as it is about the community. And that's the main reason I started it. And these guys here are the best example of it. I met these guys six months ago and these guys are like my family. Literally, there is no reason that we know each other than besides skateboarding itself. And so most of these guys might not even skateboard or have just started, but it's such a good way to bring people together, no matter what's going on in life, no matter what they're doing outside of school. It's something that people can just enjoy together and grow together and get better at. And the thing is with the skate park is it's a place where obviously people can skate. And right now, no matter what rule you put down or what rule that we have for the city, people are going to skate. It's, you can't stop it. And right now, we get in trouble here and there because we're skating in places we shouldn't be. And the problem is there's no designated spots to skate and we don't really know where they are. So to be honest, we really need a skate park, a place for them to go. I got 40 kids in my shop skating all around it and I don't know what to do about it. I can't, I can't stop it. It's going to keep going and keep growing and we need a skate park to put them at a place they can go in the day and have fun and enjoy each other. And the thing is, going forward, you have everybody here to help you build the skate park from every part, from putting it together, from the art, from the design, the strategy, building, hard work, cleaning, all of it. These guys have thousands of ideas. They'll give them to you in seconds. They keep my business running just because of their ideas. And it's, it's also the careers that the sport, like it grows because there's so much more than just the guy who's skateboarding. There's the guy who's taking the videos, the guy who's designing the skateboard for them to ride. And there's, I could point out, five videographers, five artists, five builders who literally will just go and find parts and put them together. It's the most creative sport ever. And it's such a great way for these guys to just start focusing on the future and building their career up and, and learning what they're going to do for the rest of their lives. And I could talk for like six more hours with a lot of guys, but I just want to say, skateboarding is extremely important. We need a skate park and I thank you guys so much and I'm here to help. You guys can talk to me whenever, ask me a million questions. I'll have every answer I can give you and I'm sure everyone else here has a thousand answers too. Thank you so much.
I don't have much to add, honestly. I really don't have much to add. That was my brother.
You're done, you're done.
I know, I honestly could just walk away at this point. But no, I'm Daniel Cobb, older brother. I work, I work with my brother and I'm honestly really just proud of him for what he came up here to say because everything he said, I 100% agree with. I, I grew up as a kid in a similar world where I just wanted to be a part of a community. I just wanted to have that environment to share this, I mean, really awesome sport with. I mean, literally look at everyone here, like I'm, I'm surprised by all the people here. I just showed up because he asked me to come. I had no idea this was even going on. So I, I'm honestly so grateful for the fact that there's this much opportunity in the room and that you guys are here to really bring this all together. So it really lies on you guys to really, you know, step forward and be like, this is important to our kids, this is important to our family, this is important to, you know, who we are and who we are as skaters as well. Like this is, this is our family. And so I want to stand here as well alongside of my brother Nick to say, hey, like this is the opportunity we have to really bring everybody together and, you know, treasure the creativity and the artistry and honestly just the experience altogether as a sport and as an activity, you know, to get out of the house. A lot of times in this day and age, it's like everyone's on their computers doing stuff all day long, getting caught up in a lot of that stuff. And I mean, it's important, you know, for some things, but to have the ability to go out and skate and know you're in an environment where it's okay and you're not going to get in trouble, it's great. It's such a good opportunity. And so I'm here to say, you know, thank you everyone for coming here and hanging out. Like this is really, really great that you guys came here to support this and I'm looking forward to you guys' response and all this because it's going to be, it's going to be really good. So thank you so much.
So I'm Justin Sarna, 5126 Glengate. I share a postal code with you and I actually do some, some work with the city fire department, but I'm not technically in Rochester proper. But I was here today, first of all, I'm standing in front of like a legend. So to me, like he got me 25 years ago, we used to do demos in the Thanksgiving Day Parade and it was getting awareness around skating and that there was no skate parks in Midland, was it? And the old timers that remember the Ferndale Skate Park that we used to skate in. So we'd have to travel all over the place. And the reason I came today is because I just went, I'll admit, I was an inline skater, so there's probably not a lot of love for me in this room. But I went today to South, South Street to pick up a skateboard because my daughter's two and I want to expose her to the sport. You know, inline's kind of dead and I figured skateboarding is one that she should get into. But just for her to be around it and like the lifelong friendships that I've had, you know, you can't beat those, but there's a, there's a mental focus when you're skating that, that takes you away from everything. And to me, if we had video games like we had now, I still don't think we would have played. We had Nintendo and Nintendo was sweet. If you remember back then, there was, that was cool enough to keep you inside. Like just because the games are better now doesn't mean that we didn't have the same distractions. So to have a park though, you know, we would travel two, three hours to go try to find a park and now you could just travel within your metropolitan area. So I would love to see it so that my daughter gets exposed to it. She stepped on her first board today and it just happened that they had the flyer out, so I thought I'd show up. And now I'm standing in front of the guy who like single-handedly got me truly into the sport. Um, so just thanks for, thanks for uh, the time and I really would love to see what it, what becomes of it.
My name is George Likewise, I'm owner of Modern Skate and Surf and Modern Skate Park in Royal Oak and um, I've been in this uh, industry for many, many years and, and I've been involved in developing at least fifteen public skate parks throughout Michigan. Certainly, almost every one in the Detroit metropolitan area, I've had some kind of hand in. Lansing, Grand Haven, Mount Pleasant, Traverse City, either raising money or helping to design, develop it or find a designer and a developer for those projects because I think everybody should be able to skate for free, just like you can play basketball and tennis. Um, unfortunately, if you want to come to my place with a roof over your head in the wintertime, it's a couple of bucks, but like uh, we try to keep it reasonable. Um, but uh, skating in all of its forms teaches a lot about perseverance, it teaches you how to, you know, fail a bunch of times and get up and dust yourself off and succeed. Uh, I personally think it, it makes better human beings and um, there's a lot of um, a lot of things that go into building a skate park, there's a lot of little things that people don't think about, like seating and shelter and um, uh you know, access for public transportation and things like that. And I just want to offer my assistance in any way I can uh, to help to make sure you make the best park possible with, with the money you have. A lot of people might put a lot of money towards something, but if they don't get the right park builder to build it, I, I said that we had a project in Lansing, Michigan and they were gonna get some damn builder to build it, which would have lasted past the nuclear holocaust, but it might not have been skateable. So uh, we luckily got a, a, a company called Team Payne, which are friends of mine to build this one and it became a success. And the last thing I'll say is virtually every project I've been involved in, the parks director came back to me and said, it's the most used public facility I've ever built. And uh, if you, if you envision like two tennis courts and four people could have fun on two tennis courts, but you could probably have thirty or forty kids having fun in a skate park in that area. Or a baseball diamond, you could have two teams and there's twenty to thirty people having fun. You could have three hundred kids on the size of a baseball diamond having fun at the same time. So, just to keep that in mind, I, I'm sure you guys are gonna do the right thing. And you can see, obviously the community needs it and I'm in support of it and anything I can do to help, I, I will help out.
It's hard to follow that. My name is Henry, 451 East Nowackler Road. I know the importance of this skate park because I was once an immigrant when I came here to the US, uh not knowing anybody. And this group of people, I mean, at, at the time, it was another group of people, but it's the same community, uh took me with open arms and that prevented so much in my life, right? So uh, skateboarding, it's huge for mental health, as everybody else has said it. I am the 988 manager, if you guys don't know what 988 is, it's a suicide prevention lifeline. I'm the manager for Common Ground here in Oakland County. And the main thing that I hear from people struggling about suicide, thinking about killing themselves, is the lack of community, feeling isolated, feeling alone. So everything that was brought up here, COVID, not having resources, not having a place to go, that is a place where, where we can take advantage of this opportunity that we have to help a lot of people, to go to a place, have a community, a very inclusive community, and I can say that firsthand, to go and enjoy themselves and feel part of something. So therefore, this is a very important project for all of us here.
Hi guys, mine will be short and sweet. Um, I'm Rachel Marley, I live at 753 Ludlow. Um, and I just want to say as someone who will be living like a block and a half away from where the skate park will be, I one thousand percent support it and my neighbors do, we're all excited about it. Um, so that support is there. And the other thing is, um, just to give a shout out to these kids, two of them in there are mine and the rest of them have been in my house and all around and they are just the most fantastic group of kids that you could ever want to know and to have them in your community would be like, just a privilege, so.
Hi, uh, my name is Jessica Carroll, uh 727 Cobblestone Drive. Um, I first got into skateboarding when I was way younger and I was fortunate enough to be able to do so when South Street Skate Park was still open. But now, unfortunately, we don't have a place to skateboard, but what struck me about going to a skate park, I was apprehensive and nervous the first time, but I was amazed at how everybody was so ready and willing and able to help and teach and guide and just talk to you. The sense of community, like the, the sentiment that's been shared is really important and very palpable whenever you're at a skate park. It's always a welcoming place for anybody. Um, I'm also a little bit tired of driving out to Auburn Hills, Sterling Heights, all these different places to go to a skate park. I think it would be nothing but beneficial to the community to have a skate park to go to. Thanks.
Hi, um, so my name is Krista Cobb and you've met two of my sons a little bit ago, uh the bras. Um, so I just want to thank you for allowing us to be here and um, obviously my, our family has been a part of downtown Rochester for I think twenty-three years now. Um, we've been happily located at 222 South Main Street, um, under the Daniel Bryan advertising um, sign and we've just really enjoyed being a part of the community. And I just want to say as a mom, that and a husband, actually, who loves to skateboard and I wish he could be here, but um, you know, it's been a big part of our family growing up over the years. Um, you know, something that the boys have loved to do, they do it with their dad, um they do it with their nephew and I just think that um, just enjoying seeing the kids, you know, around our office now, which has been a, been a good, you know, a good thing. We've enjoyed having them and getting to know them and they are great kids and just really enjoyed meeting all of them and getting to know them a little bit better and um, I just think it would be a great, great opportunity for Rochester. I just want to say Rochester has done some really amazing um, things for the community and with all the different downtown, the lights, the, all the different events in Rochester and um, this honestly would be to one more thing that would just really set you guys apart as a community. And I think it'd be a real blessing for the kids and um, and that's it. So thank you so much, appreciate you guys.
Hello, council, uh, my name is Linda Gallagher and I own a business, South Street Skate Shop with my husband Vaughn. I was not going to speak tonight, but I thought, how can I be here with all of these awesome people who showed up for this and not say something? So first of all, I want to say to everybody, thank you. Thank you for coming because without you being here, this will not happen. So thank you. Thank you for your time, I truly appreciate it. So I'm not as chatty as some of the others, I don't have a lot to say, but I do want to say thank you for being here, council and hearing us and um, taking this uh skate park uh for our community into consideration. It really is very important. I think you've already heard everything. So again, thank you, thank you so much.
This audience is amazing, someone should get a picture. Did you guys get a picture? Okay, go get a picture. Kim Russell, 345 Lysander and we have, I'm, I see familiar faces from 326 Albertson Street, you know, the deck that people really love to skateboard on. And my husband would be here, he would totally want to support this. You know that when I ran for council a decade and a half ago, that our building got uh graffiti very badly and we needed something for these young people. And so that was one of the reasons I started running for city council. And every time we have to go tell the people that you can't skateboard here because our insurance company will not cover you, um, we always talk about the skate park. So I do have one idea that I think would be really helpful, is the places where you love to skate park is to put that sign up. Remember how we did that in Hollett Park and some of our other parks? So at the um, parking structure, like put the sign up so people know that it's coming and what's happening, because I'm sure this resolution will pass. Thank you.
I was a little bit forced to come up here. My name is Evangeline Cobb, I live uh-
Oh, another Cobb.
742 Lake Angeles Shores, 48326. Um, uh, those are my bum brothers over there. And um, they started this, my, they started Bra and I'm like, kind of like their artist and I kind of been learning how to do art and growing in art and um, they actually, one of them, my brother Nicholas wants me to paint a skate park. So, I don't know what skate park it is, but he wants me to paint it. So I painted the mural in the Bra, the Bra shop, so. Yeah, but thank you for the opportunity and I really hope that this goes well and thank you.
Is that, is that it? All right, that was pretty strong.
I think there's, I think they're all for it.
All right, so at 7:59, we're going to close the public hearing and now the, this part of it is where the city council debates it and decides what and if we're going to do. Uh, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Albrecht.
Uh, thank you Mayor. Thank you everybody for showing up, this is amazing and um, uh, hearing from young to old and everyone in between, uh just was very moving. I was thinking about this as I was reading through everything and I'm going, when I grew up, I would grab my bike, grab my baseball mitt and my bat and I'd ride to a park and play baseball. I'd grab my basketball, walk to the court and shoot hoops. In the winter, I'd get my skates and back then I would walk with my skates across the street, which my dad didn't like very much, but we'd skate on the pond that the city provided. Now fast forward thirty years, my daughter is a figure skater. Now, she could have learned to skate on the canals or lakes or things of, but they, she learned to skate at the Onyx. If the Onyx wasn't there, she wouldn't have done that, but she met a lot of people, she became a synchronized skater, did that all through high school and everything else like that. So I think, when I hear all this, if, if a child, a two-year-old who just got a skate, uh first skateboard uh, yesterday to, you know, the owner of Bra and everybody else here, if you didn't have the Onyx to go to skate or that basketball court or that baseball field or all those other kinds of things, how daunting that would be to just, your mental health and just being a kid. And we want kids to be kids. And we want, the, the couple of you came up and said, hey, we're skateboarding on the street and the parking lot and all those other kinds of things. And I don't want anybody to get hurt, um, but when you don't have a place to go, that ball field, that basketball court, that ice skating rink, you're gonna make do wherever you do, whether it's outside of Marilyn Trent's office or the, the DBA building or whatever the, the one is and every other parking structure in here, I don't want to see people hurt or anybody hurt. Rochester's always been a, a destination uh place. We have a regional downtown, we have a municipal park that is beautiful. You know, you see, we voted earlier on three more events that are gonna be in the municipal park and downtown. So this, this city is always moving and shaking, so uh, to have a skate park, and there's a list in here of skate parks, I go by the one in Auburn Hills and Claussen, I see them, how beautiful they are and, and some of them are already dated by now, but there are people there all the time and, and many of you are not old enough to get in your car, you can't drive to Claussen, you can't walk to Auburn Hills, so to have something local that you can ride your bikes to or walk to or, 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 or something else, it's just the right thing to do. So, the skate park today is the ball field I grew up on. You guys have just now taken this sport, it's now an Olympic sport, you know, if we put, you know, I watch that half pipe and I go, oh my gosh, that's amazing how they do that, but we're not looking for a half pipe here. But just to give you a place to do this, uh, I am in two hundred percent support, I've talked to Kathy Dalton about this many times and I think uh, with Linda Kirksey Davis, you know, uh grant writer extraordinaire, we've got a bite at the apple here. That's why I asked the question, we've got twenty-three million dollars on the books, we're looking for seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's what we're voting on tonight. The resolution is to make sure we can apply for this grant. That's what's in front of us, not how it's gonna be maintained and all that other kind of stuff. So I, I have my, I'm throwing my full support behind this resolution. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I still own a skateboard with clay wheels. So uh, I am absolutely in support of this resolution. Um, in fact, I'll just make the motion now. Motion to uh, support the resolution for the application to the DNR Spark Grant.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Sage, support by Councilmember Peterson. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Trent?
Uh, well, I can't add too much on to what Mark said, as he said it so eloquently, but I would like to uh, uh confirm that yes, I think it's a wonderful addition to our parks and the fact that it will be used and the fact of the amount of support that's here in the, in the convincing way that, that we were um, spoken to by each one of you, I want to thank you for that. It's not easy to stand there, I have, and that uh, takes a lot of courage. Um, and the, the good thing, that other good things are, it's gonna be safer and that's what we want for our kids and our community. And the, and the idea and the, and the concept of building community, but that's what Rochester's all about and I, I really, really am quite moved. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you, thank you. I just want to say this is massive support tonight. Congratulations, it's huge that you all are here. Thank you, thank you. So, so it's obvious skateboarding is part of the culture of Rochester, right? With all you here, the businesses here, it's part of our culture, you know, and we want you in Rochester, all of you, we want you to be skateboarding in Rochester in a safe place. Um, I do think it's important, I completely support this, but I really want you all to know that the city doesn't have a pile of money sitting aside waiting to do this project. We need the DNR to fund this. So, you know, that's why we're making this resolution, so we can get grant money from the Department of Natural Resources, because we need this grant money to make this project happen. So, you know, we need to send this message to the DNR, we want this, we support it, we gotta have it in Rochester.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say I fully support this, I, it's kind of a no-brainer for me, it's a great idea across the board, echoing all the comments of my colleagues. I just wanted to thank you all. I've been on city council almost two years now, this is the, you know, you see how this goes on TV, this is what I was expecting more often. One or two people out there, but this, this is awesome. So thank you very much for, for coming out.
Member Albrecht, you had another point?
Yeah, just um, I asked how many signatures there were Kathy, I know I saw it on Facebook, I added my signature, but all of you are out here, uh, to Mayor Protem's point, if we want to get this grant, we gotta do this times ten. So go back and get your friends to sign that petition, so when we turn in our grant, instead of thirteen hundred names on it, there's thirteen thousand names on it. That's the number of residents that are in Rochester or so. So, so take this enthusiasm we have tonight, get more people to sign that petition, so when Linda Kirksey Davis turns in that grant, we're hitting all the right buttons and, and the DNR can say, hey, Rochester's a cool place, they deserve this money. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor. So, I've always been one to talk about the highest and best use of space and land in our community and this would be the best, highest in use, use of our land to give to this community that we have before us tonight.
Further com, further comments from the council?
Your Honor, I did want to make a note for the record that we did receive one letter of correspondence and support from Lisa Senek.
Very good. So I just want to say thank you everybody for coming, this is a pretty big crowd, so it's al, always good to hear that. Um, how, how do you go against the whole Cobb family? So, you know, hopefully we get this grant, uh but as the Mayor Protem says, we need the grant, so we need, you know, we need everybody to follow through. Um, so I will support this. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixen?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Good luck everybody.
I, I just want to say how much I appreciate you passing this resolution, it means a lot. We've been working a long time on this and it means a lot for our community and it means a lot to me, so thank you so much and you can all leave now.
We need like a break?
Yeah, why don't, we'll take a, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Clear it out? There's a few people, thank you for hanging.
So we're gonna continue the meeting, we're out to legislative deliberation. Exceed consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 14 Cemetery of the Code of the City of Rochester, revise Section 1410, general rules and regulations regarding dogs on cemetery property to allow by permit- property, to allow by permit only. Ms. Madam Clerk?
Sure, Your Honor. Administration, Nick, Jeff and I, are asking council to consider the attached amendment to Chapter 14, that would read, rather than prohibiting dogs in the cemetery, the language would be, would change to, unless said pet has a current Pet Park permit and is on a leash not exceeding six feet in length, pet shall not be allowed to run at large, cause damage, defecate, or urinate on grave sites, and all waste shall be immediately removed and properly disposed of. So, we're asking for council to consider that this evening, and first reading and introduction.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. City Manager?
If I may for some background, so, I remember about ten years ago, Leanne called me and said, it was on a Saturday at like eight o'clock at night, and she said, I think a big branch has broken, cemetery, will you go look at the tree? So I was on my phone, and I was walking Bailey, because you know, I live at that corner, so, I'm walking, and she's, I said, well, I have Bailey with me, she's like, just go in there, it's eight o'clock at night. So I walked in, I swear to God, it wasn't, thirty seconds later, the mayor at the time called me and said, Mayor Dalton, called and said, why are you in the park, in the cemetery with your dog? I'm like, because Leanne asked me to go in and look at this tree, and I'm a resident calling, said, Nick should know better than that. And I thought, wow. So I never take my dog in there. I see a ton of people take their dogs in there, but more importantly than this, that, I wrote a thesis in college about the most underutilized parks in our country, our cemeteries. In Southfield, we had Holy Septica, it was three square miles, and people use it as a park in reverence to what the facility was for. I think people, if they use their logic, they don't need to walk on the graves and walk in there. We have a resident in our area that nine o'clock at night throws three big dogs over the fence and lets them run around like a dog park. And we've caught them, as neighbors, we've caught them in saying, it's not your personal dog park, you don't know what you're doing, there's deer in there, there's baby deer in there, don't do that. So, I think people that are responsible to walk, it's a great place to walk, obviously, we're selling park benches there now, we want people to go enjoy the history, spend some time in there, and there's, I actually had people tell me that part of their healing process, we talked about mental health, is my mom's in, in Mount Avon, not my mom, their mom's in Mount Avon, and her favorite thing was her dog. And my dad can't bring the dog in to see her mom. So, little stories like that, and I think it has to be responsible, I think we should put up poop stations, I think we should make sure that we do everything we can to make sure people follow the good rules. I think this town's, in the park especially, they're very diligent about picking up after animals, not so much on the streets, if people are as diligent, but we'll make sure that we police it. And I think it's time for that, for more people to enjoy the cemetery, because it's such a great place. So, just my two cents, and I don't want to get you all that again, I've never gone in there since then, so I will tell you that, with the dog.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Just a next last point, if we do put the stations, we've got to do it in a very honorable, very, it is a cemetery first, and I don't want, you know, big signs, you know, but just very discreet little stations, if in fact this passes, so.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I want to echo City Manager Banda's comments, only because, living by the park, I see people not only in the cemetery with their dogs off the leashes either, I see them walking on the streets without the leash too, and it makes it very dangerous for those who have dogs on leashes, that, you know, there's a lot of issues, but most importantly, I have, it's been very upsetting to see them not pick up after their animals and pets in the cemetery, so I think it's about time, so thank you.
Councilmember Trent?
Yes, I will echo that, I lived next to the cemetery on Fairview and Taylor for thirty years, and, yeah, I think it would be good, I think it's a good place to have, to take your dog for a walk, and I definitely, I've been spending a lot of time there lately, so, I think it's very underutilized, and I think a set of rules and giving people that permission would be a great idea.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm very appreciative that this amendment to this ordinance has come before us, because I have been guilty of idling and loafing on the grounds in the cemetery, so now I have adjusted my behavior, and I really appreciate that.
Idling and loafing?
That would be under Section B, number two.
I need to read that.
Idling or loafing on the grounds is not permitted.
No loafing, got it.
I've already witnessed this loafing.
Idling or loafing. Councilmember Gould?
So now you need a permit for that?
I, I will vote no on this. I love my dog, my dog comes with me everywhere, I walk the dog, I'm very good about picking up after the dog. The whole city is a lovely spot to walk the dog, there's plenty places to take your dog and interact with your dog, and I see the dog at the grocery store, and I see the dog everywhere, maybe, I don't know, I don't, maybe they're in church now too, I don't know. It just, it just seems wrong to me, people do not clean up their dog's waste routinely, you certainly can't clean it up when they urinate, and I'm just picturing myself sitting over a loved one's grave, and then hearing a dog ripping over after a squirrel or something, six-foot leash or not, or barking and growling at another dog. There are so many other places to do this, so that's why, why I will vote no on this.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you. So, I think the cemetery is a beautiful green space in our, in our city, and I think a lot of residents enjoy walking, would enjoy walking their dogs there. And I'm happy that we're clarifying the, you know, the cleanup procedures, that's very important, to be very respectful of those who are buried there. And so with that, I will make a motion to give introduction and first reading for the ordinance amendment to the City Code, Chapter 14, Cemetery, Section 1410.
Motion by the Mayor Protem, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Trent. Further discussion, Councilmember Albrecht?
In respect to City Councilmember Gould's point, Leanne, could we possibly under-five the wording that the dogs need to stay on the walkways versus, I, I, I'm having that same thing in my mind, you know, I see where it says, "defecate or urinate on grave sites", but if you're walking the dogs within the grave areas, then it's gonna happen, even if they pick it up, so maybe keeping dogs on just the paved areas would be a good consideration.
Can I say, I don't disagree with that, I think the idea is, I think that's smart, because there are graves that touch the curb, but most of them are back a bit, but I would, maybe it's the first step, is stay on the pavement, even if you, if somebody had to go to the grave, they could hold their dog.
Yeah, how do you visit your loved one with the dog?
Right, so that's the only tough part about that, but I, I don't picture, I think you'd be, people would be much more responsible picking up, urinating is almost impossible to stop dogs from doing that, but, but picking up in the cemetery, I think they would probably be way more responsible than they are on the normal streets, but if there was a way to keep them on the pavement, that's the first step, I mean, that's where you walk, we don't wa, I hope people aren't walking on people's graves, I don't think that's the point, so, maybe we could think about that a little bit more, how to do that.
Councilmember Trent?
Is that enforceable?
That'll be tough.
I mean, what do you, what's the consequences? I mean, we already are telling people.
We don't want to have every resident calling, saying, hey, somebody's got the dog now in the cemetery, I understand that.
Keep the dog, I mean, what, a little sign, keep your dog on the road. I mean, I agree, and I think Councilman Gould had some good points, but.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, and so would we also have signage at both gates?
Yeah, sure.
And then when they go in to get their permit, there'll be, anyone who does that will then be notified as well, that cemetery is off limits unless you have that, and like total direction as to what's allowed and what's not. Because, me too, I believe it's a sacred place, I don't consider it a park to go in, do I consider it a place to be with those that have gone, and as a peaceful place? So, if people can abide by that, that would be great, but really policing's going to be hard, unless we have a good campaign out there to let them know.
I think that's very important, if I may, Mr. Mayor, that the campaign is a good word, I think we need to say, if we're taking this leap of faith, then we need to have compliance and respect for the facility, so.
A suggestion, maybe we bring this back to council in three to six months to see how it's going.
That's a good idea.
Get a report from administration or DPW, is this working or is it not?
I think that's fair.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, in that timeframe, can, how are we going to police it in that timeframe to see how things are working? Like, to say before we, before we, to pass this, what would we be doing to put those steps in place?
So, my suggestion would be that signage, and then the folks that maintain the facility cut the grass, and they will let us know, trust me, if there's issues, because they don't have to do with that now, so if there are, we could ask them to make sure there are police force. We might not catch the person, but if we see a pattern, then we back off and say it's not working, because we do not want that to happen.
Right, that sounds good.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Is it worth it, bringing this back next meeting with some of that change in language, or am I in the minority here? Because, under this current language, you know, if they're not walking on the path and signs at either side, I'm gonna vote no also, so, I would rather see some changes that would then switch me to a yes vote.
Your Honor, right now you have a motion for introduction and first reading as it stands, without any amendments. Maybe the process could be either to table this, or to go ahead with this motion and then be prepared for your amendments for second reading and adoption.
I could talk about it at staff meeting tomorrow, and see if we can get some more creativity in how to police it, and we can bring it back. No, we're not in a huge rush, we've waited seventy thousand years for this.
So who is the maker of the motion?
I was the maker.
Do you want to table it, or?
I'd like the motion to stand, and then we can bring it back with.
Yeah, we'll tweak it for next meeting.
Yeah, that's why we have a second reading.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, can we get input from our police chief as well, since their department's the one who has to maintain the security of that at night when they lock it up?
Councilmember Gould?
Can we also get input from some families that have some loved ones there, get their opinion on that, other than the, I know the one individual wants to visit the gravesite with the dog, but thanks.
I have, a lot of us up here have.
I've got one there.
Have members in there.
I'd really like public input, if public input's needed though, from the public.
Let me think how we can.
But, could the chief come up?
Facebook page.
Could the chief come up and?
Oh, there you go, yeah.
Chief, do you want to add? What do you think of all this, Chief?
Well, I think in a lot of ways, we're legislating something that's already taking place. And so, I think we're spending a lot of time discussing a problem, and what could happen, and all that, when in reality, probably what brought this to our attention and to, in front of the body here, is, is maybe we should be legislating something that's already occurring. And so, we have a number of dogs that walk in the cemetery, we don't get calls on it that cause concern, or, you know, somebody trying to enforce what they perceive to be a rule, because most people probably don't realize that it's not a rule. We don't get calls, and we can check with the public works and the people that cut the grass, to see whether that's an issue for them, so we can, you know, have that information when we come, come back to you. We, unlike some other areas in the city where we have dog-on-dog issues and things of that nature, we don't have those currently in the cemetery. I guess I'm not sure that allowing this is gonna necessarily drastically change the user behavior, or turn it into a dog park. I think it's basically, as I said, legislating an activity that already occurs there in the park. Looking at it as we do parks in other locations, the similar signage that's there at all the parks now, indicating about, you know, can't be there in a special event, so if we had some historical events that occasionally happen there at the cemetery, that would be, you know, again, keeping with our park rules, other locations, that wouldn't be permitted at that time. That would probably, also, one of the things that we had talked about prior to this, is in making sure that it doesn't happen during a service, so that somebody does come in, that would be something that we would look at, maybe adding to the signage or during burial services. So I think there's ways to monitor it, I guess, to look at what our experience is, but I guess, like I said, I think it all falls back to, why are we bringing this to you to permit what's already happening?
And I might add that, I should have thought of this, that best practices, obviously, this is not the first community to deal with this, I will look up best practices of other communities throughout the country, actually, how they deal with this, because I'm sure it's a, it's a thing. I'll have that for you at the next one.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Anything further? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
No.
Gould?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
We'll bring back more information, thank you very much.
Okay, next on to regular reports and business, versus the consideration request from the Downtown Development Authority for a letter of support for the RAP, not rap music, grant to grant program from City Council. Director Travarro, welcome.
I brought my hype team with me, thank you. That was nice, everybody applauding like that, I don't get that when I come here, hi.
We don't either.
I know, right? It's a tough job. Good evening, Council, so, in your packet, a special thank you to amazing City Clerk Leanne O'Connor for helping me with my resolution. As you know, when we came here talking about our Front Porch Project a few months ago, we did indicate that we would be seeking additional funding beyond our DDA capture. This is our second grant that we have applied, or are attempting to apply for. RAP, this is a second round, it's actually run through the MEDC, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and the first round that they had, what we found in talking with Oakland County, is that there was only one community in Oakland County that actually received grant funds. A lot, actually, tri-county area was very underserved by the RAP funds, so, a lot of the counties had talked to MEDC, expressed their discontent with that, so now the county and other counties are able to apply for what they're calling a sub-grant, meaning that the county could gather communities with projects, and then have them apply as one, then the monies would come back down if granted to Oakland County, and then they would distribute them to their communities. That is what Oakland County is working on. What they're actually doing is, they are going to be asking the MEDC for $7 million for that fund, and then through ARPA dollars that the county still has, the commission is looking to add another $4 million, so it'd be a total pot of $11 million. This is gonna be targeted specifically to Main Street Oakland County communities, of which we are one, and they have, they went through, talked to all the communities, because they wanted to make sure that everyone, if we were going to do this, that had eligible projects, would get a piece of the pie. So there are twelve projects, they're gonna be included in the sub-grant application that will be going up to MEDC, including the Front Porch Project. The minimum grant amount is $250,000, the maximum is a million, and it's based on 50% of cost, whichever is higher, so a million or if higher than that. So there is a very intense application that we have to fill out with this, the county is helping us with this, we didn't have to employ Linda Services with this one, county's helping us, because they want to make sure that everyone gets their best opportunity to present their project, and so, one of the tiebreaker questions is if we were able to get a letter of support from our municipality. That would be an item that would put us over the top, if there were communities that scored the same, this would be one that would just pop us over the top. So that's why I'm here tonight.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the consideration for the request for the DDA to, for the letter of support for the RAP two great grant program for, so I believe that we cannot go after grant money, so I appreciate it, I appreciate you taking the time to do it, whatever we get will be awesome, so, thank you.
Support. Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Gould. Discussion? Councilmember Trent? Mayor Protem Salvia?
One quick question, what's the timeline, Kristi?
So, this grant has to be turned in to the state by June 30th, we actually have to have our things into the county by the 26th of this month, so that they can get all the package together.
Okay, and any other tiebreaker questions?
Not that you guys can help with, let's see here, ones that we're doing, following a response on how the program's support and investments will create an environment necessary to attract and retain talent, add new housing options, enable business creation and attraction, and provide resources for Michigan citizens and communities, and then also, how does the program help local governments avoid budget crises, retain current residents, and enhance downtown vitality? So I feel like we got those two, I can figure that out. Yes.
Councilmember Trent?
That answered my question, yeah, thanks.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, keep it posted.
Good luck.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Good post, too.
Good luck.
That is, that is pretty funny, actually. Next, we have a receipt, we have a receipt of the check, register reports, if you have any questions. Then on to receive a report from various boards and commission. First, a report from the Historical Commission, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Historical Commission is very appreciative of the additional assistance provided for the Historical Plaque Program. And to date, we have sold this year 67 copies of the DUR book. So it's kind of exciting.
Very good. Next is a report from the Principal Shopping District, Councilmember Gould.
Thank you, sir. We met on June 7th and completed our agenda. We had a request for recommendation for Rochester Pose, which I think will be coming to council soon. The plan is to do that on Thursday, October 5th, from 7 to 9. They're talking about a theme of heroes versus villains, but we'll be on the lookout for that. There was a small cost of living adjustment to the employees there at the, that worked for Christie to Jenna and Taylor. That was approved. And then we had a bunch of information on the front porch project. The rewalls have been brought in to serve as construction managers, just for the budget phase. The budget estimations are supposed to be due somewhere in July. They've talked a lot about the external funds, which you just, we just heard about. And I believe both community input sessions are done, I think. They had about 80 to 90 attendees, and there is a summary report coming soon. The Dancing in the Streets, is that to us soon?
Yeah.
Tonight, yeah. That's right. June 24th is the Downtown Makers Market, Market, Market on Walnut from 10 to 4 on Fourth Street. About 40 vendors from 10 to 2. There'll be music, crafts for the children. I guess some kind of incredible chalk artist that does these illusions, depending on the angle you're standing in. So that'll be kind of fun, and some other activities on making your own jewelry and some poetry. And I think I will call it right there.
Good.
Thank you.
Next is a report from the Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. City Manager.
We had just one case, sorry, we had one case last month, and I'm trying to remember what it was. We got it, I don't know which one it was. Oh, sorry, it was the follow-up to the planning commission meeting that we had on the new office building at the corner of Highland and Main Street. So they had a issue that the planning commission made a condition of approval, that there's a landscape aisle and that by strict gridding, the ordinance would be 10 feet. They were providing a hedge in a two and a half to four and a half foot actual area. So we met with the residents, across the street, the precedent was set at the Morgan Stanley Building. I don't know why, but the planner at the time, Birch and Associates, did not interpret that ordinance the same way. So ZBA was able to not set a precedent and give that approval to the developer to, again, accomplish the green belt with the hedge, keep it 30 inches tall, things like that. So we got that approved that evening. That was it.
Good. Report from the Planning Commission, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had one public hearing at the last planning commission meeting to consider a special exception request for outdoor dining at the Rochester Eagles area. Bit of discussion centered on ADA disability access, and I think we made some progress there with that, and it was approved at, at the planning, because does that come then before us?
No, it's all set.
It's all done, okay.
You launched a discussion, who was a member of the Eagles Club and who was not a member of the Eagles Club.
Yes, that came up as well.
Protem.
I'm in.
Any further public comment out there? All right, on to miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
I'm good. Thank you for allowing me to take a vacation. Our family appreciated it. We had a good time, and staff did a great job keeping me updated, and it's easy to come back. If you just keep in touch a little bit, then you don't get mauled when you get back. So I appreciate everybody's efforts. We're, we're deep into our contract negotiations, hope we're going to bring the next three to you very soon. By the end of this week, we have our third round with the folks, and everybody's been pretty positive, and we're working towards getting in. PLC did finally sign, so that one's delivered. So now is the command officers, AFSCME, and then the actual, the fire department, Wadre Open. And I would ask this, that I'm, by the 26th, I will recommend the city council for the non-union resolution to mirror what the unions got, if everything's settled by then. And then just to remind council that this body has the responsibility and the privilege, I would say, to evaluate the treasurer, clerk, and the city manager. So it can be, I know it's been done in different ways before, I haven't been through it, so you can ask us to fill out evaluations, you can do it, it doesn't matter. So it's something for council to consider, how you would like us three to handle that. No big hurry on our part, but we'll do however you would like us to do that. We will follow through with that. That would be it, thank you.
Good. Madam Clerk.
Nothing this evening, other than our meeting afterward.
Mr. City Attorney.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gould.
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
I just wanted to say that I participated at Dinosaur Hills River Days this past weekend and spent some time talking to the Trout Unlimited guys and all the great things they're doing to keep our fish healthy and our Paint Creek healthy. It was, they're going to be counting the fish this Friday, June 16th, in the river. So exciting stuff happening in our community.
It is.
Councilmember Sage.
Nothing deceiving, sir.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Just one thing, I'd like administration to look, now that the pandemic has been officially ended, do we still need to do hybrid meetings? I think we're the only city that's still doing that. Like, as Councilmember Gould said, it was great to see this place packed with people. So I think if people are passionate about city government, we could go back to just the good old days when people showed up when they had something to talk about, like we saw tonight. That's it, Mayor.
I've got a couple of things. One of them is, I went to the annual picnic meeting for the Avon Historical Society, and it was quite a rip-roaring fun time. Everybody missed that, and I'm not kidding, it really was. It was a 1970s theme, so it was a game, and not just because I won a prize, I had a great time, and I learned a lot. The other thing is, you're getting an invitation, and speaking of cemeteries, I've been in this one quite a lot, with my native plant garden in front of the mausoleum. And now, next to the mausoleum, we're going to have a Never Forget Garden for the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, which is actually quite special, because the Daughters of the American Revolution, who has this as a program, doesn't often get it in a cemetery. It's a lot of times in the Daughters' yards, or backyards. And this is going to be on Wednesday, June 14th, at 4:00 PM, and it's a partnership with the City of Rochester, the City Community Foundation of Greater Rochester, the Daughters of the American Revolution, and little old Rochester pollinators. So please come, they are going to have some food and cookies, and the mayor will be there and a few dignitaries. Thank you. This has been coming about.
When is this?
Wednesday.
Wednesday? Yeah, June 14th. It had to be moved, this Wednesday. It had to be moved from last fall, because it was really, really rainy and cold, and it was very dismal. You guys just didn't know. I mean, people are talking about this. The Historical Society's coming, I'm getting calls from the Daughters, the Community Foundation's going to be there. It could be, you know, quite an event.
I'll be there, Marilyn.
Thank you. And I was going to tell you, I thought you knew, but you are on the speakers list, you know, to say thank you for planting that rose bush on Saturday, Marilyn. And I ran into a woman when I was planting the rose bushes and the plants on Saturday, and she was thanking me for that bench that was donated by the Community Foundation of Greater Rochester, though she didn't know who donated it. And she comes there every morning at 9:00 AM, and she drinks her coffee, and she waters the rose bushes that the deer ate. So I had to go get a new one, but she tried really hard to save it. I really appreciated that.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the Rochester Police Department for an awesome open house. It was great to see all the children enjoying that event, and how awesome all of you were. I liked seeing Kit do his tricks as well. It was pretty awesome, pretty awesome event, even though it was extremely hot. So thank you all. And also want to thank those who put together Heritage Days this year, because it was very well done, and it was a lot of fun, and there was a lot of, a lot of people there, and some really good food trucks as well. And that's about it.
Good. I would also like to congratulate the police department. That was a very nice event every year, very big turnout, lots, nice to see a lot of families there and stuff.